So, welcome. I need to turn on to my rights. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Town Promotion Committee. Do I have any apologies?
No apologies.
Any declarations of interest? And third item on the agenda, can we approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the Town Promotion Committee held on the 6th of November as a true record? Any second, propose a second please? Pat Moore, councillor Moore and councillor Avenden are proposing a second.
I'll be councillor Avenden.
Oh, you weren't here councillor Avenden. Aren't you not?
I'm right away.
Anyone else?
Was he councillor Orban?
Councillor Orban wasn't.
No, he wasn't.
I'll do questions.
Councillor Nixie. Councillor Nixie seconded then, thank you. Okay, so item four, budget update, to receive an update on the existing budget, discuss any environments need to be considered. Can I just say that the report that was sent out was the working model? Oh, sorry, does everyone else agree? I think there's only perhaps, most of us weren't here. So, me and councillor Nixie. The document that was sent out with the agenda, it was a working document really between me and Dean rather than one that should have been sent out. So Dean is going to put on our screen what the actual document is. Can you enlarge that because I for one can't see it from here. Oh, that's a bit better. So that's a slightly shortened version of what it is, so a bit more concise. Just to say, there are a couple of pieces of budget that have been taken out of here since we last discussed the budget, the last town promotion. There was an item for electrical testing, which was very specific to the bandstand. And the bandstand does not come under town promotion, it comes under Ramsgate Town Council as a whole. And also now with the assets committee, anything to do with the bandstand will be discussed through the assets committee. So I asked for that to be removed because it was not appropriate to our budget. And the other one is pair communications. And I can't quite see where that's come out from, but there was some stuff around pair communications where half of, oh, some of the money was for, very specifically for town promotion, marketing and events. Whereas the other part referred specifically to Ramsgate Town Council promotion and marketing. And so that figure has also been changed. Do you have any idea where it is on there because I haven't worked.
So it was one of the carried forward items, it was pair technology, it was for mapping of the allotments. Pair distribution is for active Ramsgate, they're both called pairs, very confusing.
Yes.
But yeah, that also would be the asset management because it's mapping of the allotments and software to do with that.
Yeah. So that is a slight adjustment since the last time that we looked at the budget. But apart from that, the only thing that we've done here is to add a commentary about the outgoing budget, which is the expected spend and the likely areas of underspend and what will either be virid or carried forward in the budget into next year or if it's unspent, it just goes back into the pot as far as Ramsgate Town Council is concerned. Councillor Orban?
Yeah, I just wanted to know the specifics on the underspend, why are we underspending?
Right, which ones?
Well, you've got the ones that says underspend.
I know, but.
Oh, you can't see.
Some of them are quite minor underspend and some of them are a lot.
Only tea.
Well, there's, yeah, not people. There's 17,000 possible underspend surplus.
So that was beautification in particular. Very unexpectedly, we had a massive underspend on it. And a part of the reason for that was because our technicians ended up doing so much work elsewhere that they ended up doing a lot less on the beautification. So, because I asked that exact question because what's happened here?
Come back then, Chair. So that will be carried forward?
We're coming to that at a report a little bit later on. Some of that will be carried forward but potentially into a different budget. It won't be carried forward under beautification. Beautification starts again with a new budget, which we agreed last month, at the last meeting.
Okay.
But there is some discussion about what to do with some of this underspend. Any other underspends that you're concerned about?
No, no.
I think like the subway art is £500, it's a small amount.
Which is the big lump.
Yeah, I think the active Ramsgate promotion, since that was drawn up, has effectively been spent and that is, has gone, is going to.
Shouldn't be any underspend this year.
No. Community ad, no. I think we've taken, well, community ad we've taken out of town promotion for next year anyway. £60.39, I'm not sure about that.
The R T C website is on the council as well.
So council events, yes, so council events, one we're looking at carrying forward with a new event which we will come to later on, and the Christmas summer lights. So those three underspends, the big ones, we will be looking at later on. Any other, so that's last year's, this year's, as it is coming up to the close at the end of the financial year. Okay. Do you want, there's a report from the town clerk.
It's literally just explaining about the underspends and saying that the balance that's there for £42,000, that's what the violence could go up to in the following items to come, there will be projects that we'll probably look to. The total of the projects, if you were to go through all of them tonight, total is about 36, so you're within.
I think the key things on here is the obelisk, there is an overlap between financial years on. It's underway, it was agreed by full council, we would continue with that one. It is underway, but it's going to go into the next financial year, so that's carried forward. And as it says on here, funds are effectively lost once not spent and budgets reset. We do have a specific reason for carrying forward. Have that back.
Yep.
Any other questions? No? No? Okay. Town promotion updates, so to receive updates from Mrs Al Smith, Town Centre and Tourism Manager on current activities to promote the town. Has everyone had a chance to have a look at the report? Okay. There were a couple of things that I picked up in here. At the bottom of page two, it says, Ramsgate Day, if members agree, this event will be brought in house working with an event organizer as per previous years. The proposed date for the event is 21st of June. That has been brought back in house because that was agreed at the budget setting meeting at the last full council. So this report was written before that information was confirmed. So that one is a tick, it's already been done. And I think my other two queries are in the empty shops report, which is there, so. So is there anything, any other, if you want to have a quick look, anything you want to? So we've got next volunteer working months in March, Thursday's ongoing. Work's happening on the Upper High Street with the flagpoles and artwork. The events fund is coming up on the 6th of May, the V E day. Which is worth going back and having a look at at some point. And Rebecca is suggesting that R T C's main event this year to be Operation Dynamo, which is the return of Dunkirk Little Ships. We've got that, that's a separate item. Councillor Orban?
Just to say, obviously with Mrs Smith being off sick at the moment, and we do all our regards to her and hopefully she gets well said. But just to say that the town clerk has been involved and I've got support from the Thunick District Council through the head of service Penny, Penny Bun to help out. She says she will fully help out with any assistance that we require for.
I think there was something about a deadline for getting the paperwork in, wasn't there?
There is, yeah, she might sometime. And so Penny will be helping Laura and she'll.
Make sure that's all done.
And she'll, yeah.
Because without that, nothing's going to happen, is it? That's the problem, yeah.
Can you start in a separate thing about the monthly timetable that's coming out?
Sorry, about the?
Monthly timetable, the February, you know.
Yeah.
What was that organised under?
Right, that's in here somewhere. Oh, do you know where it is?
I was reading about it, I can't remember where it is.
Yeah. Guy is working on that with Rebecca and. Is it on there? What's on leaflets have been replaced, there it is. What's on leaflets have been replaced with the monthly Ramsgate events calendar. So, sorry, what was the?
What's the deal with that, is that ongoing thing or is that?
Yeah, it replaces the what's on leaflet.
Time limited period or anything like that?
Not as far as I'm aware, there's no sort of like end date on it, it's just ongoing because it's replaced the what's on leaflets. Okay. Is that all right? Any?
Yeah.
Yeah? Just get, any query, just shout now. It seems to be working. So, yeah, that's fine. Okay, so is that it? We'll move on to the.
To note the report.
Sorry? Oh, yes, just can we note the report?
Note it.
Yeah. Item six, decorative lighting.
These are all done individually, each report.
Okay. Right, sorry. Item five two, empty shops report, and there was me trying to jump ahead. I was trying to beat with the time, wasn't I? So you've got, again, on your circular, circulated is the empty shops report. It's quite, I'm not going to go through all of it because a lot of it is actually a listing of the empty shops. It's well worth looking at it. I think the sad part is actually the increase in the number of empty shops over the last year. It's come from 16 and a half to 17 and a half percent. And it's the highest rate of empty shops since 2021. Obviously, losing W H Smith has been a part of that. Councillor Orban?
Chair, just to say, there was in one of the national papers, an article saying that Ramsgate has probably got the highest, definitely the highest in King, possibly the highest in the country for a town of our size.
I don't believe.
Yeah.
But, Chair, I don't believe that.
I'm just saying there was a report.
I don't know. Someone like Burnley, you'd have a lot more.
I think. I think the challenge is that we have so little control over it.
Exactly.
As much as the hard work of the empty shops group is going on, because all of these properties and the businesses are national, out of town, we have so little control over it. We're also losing Barclays this month and NatWest in August, which is just going to make the situation worse, yeah.
I have, I don't know that the R M P has taken it up and is taking it up in the House of Parliament to try and find a way forward nationally, not just, not just, obviously she's speaking for her own constituency, but for nationally as well, so I think it's a changing world. And I think that's, we just have to grasp that and other things have to take its place.
On this, on this report, this is not within this report, but there is a planning application at Thunick District Council for the old H S B C on the corner of Market Square. That planning application is for 100% flats in that property, which means the ground floor and basement is flat. We called in at.
It's NatWest.
Sorry, NatWest was it?
NatWest.
My apologies, no, NatWest will follow suit in August, I thought NatWest was up.
NatWest, the one that's loose.
It's NatWest.
It's Nat, it's NatWest.
NatWest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The High Street.
The one at the top of the High Street?
Yeah.
Opposite Argos.
Yeah.
On the corner of, yeah.
I thought we were talking, let's just clarify. I thought, what's the one at the bottom of the High Street?
H S B C.
That's what I said, H S B C.
That hasn't got planning in yet.
I thought that was the one that.
No, no, no. It is.
Ah, head of planning at T D C.
When you look, you've got the.
It suddenly came out by email this time. NatWest, Chair, definitely.
Right. Okay, well, that's fair enough, we'll skip that one. What I wanted to say was that Barclays, which is just up the road.
Another one that's empty.
Apparently has been bought by someone that wants it for offices. Now, my feeling is that it's a bit too close to the town centre for the ground floor to be an office, unless it is an employment agency type, which is what is opposite. So I think we just need to watch out for future use of that because that may have to come through planning as well.
I would say it would be an ideal thing for it.
Absolutely.
So for the people there that are going to want to come out for their lunches, going to buy things on their lunch.
If it's, if it's a business centre, it's just, it's still very close in with the retail section of Queen Street. So it's about what sort of offices and things like that, I, you know. I don't know, we've got a lot of solicitors' offices, I suppose, but.
Chair.
Anyway.
Well, I see we should get bogged down.
Yeah, I'm just saying that apparently has been bought by someone that wants to use it for offices. Councillor.
I don't really, I mean, people want to come into the town centre to shop. If you remove all the shops, like what we're doing, why not come and keep the shops underneath and living accommodation over the top? I mean, we've got a Ramsgate Town market back of sorts, which is pretty good. I mean, we're reducing our town centre even further. NatWest's done a dirty one, I said, we're a market town, they want to wait, my bank as well. So that'd be nice as another top business for people to use and flats. Of course, the top Barclays is the same, you know, everybody's seen me coming into Ramsgate to lessen the choice of shops. There's no point really walking up King Street at the moment, really. But I mean, we really need to try to encourage people back in their towns.
All we need is, we need to be able to encourage the retail back into the town, sorry councillor Nixie.
Right, I mean, there's elements of this as a moot point, isn't it? I mean, it's not planning, we can't decide on any of this. We can sit around saying how much we'd like this, that and the other until we're blue in the face. Can't we just sort of like deal with what we've got on the table, sorry?
Yeah. Councillor Hudson?
There is going to be some government legislation to try and give powers to councils like T D C to take back shops that have been empty for a long time.
Hmm.
So it's their sort of land banked, as it were. I can't remember the legislature, what it's called. So that will help lighten new looking the High Street on the left. You know, that's been, that's owned by someone who has a massive sort of portfolio of properties and he's not interested in actually reliving it, he doesn't care. But obviously it's looked horrible. So that's the sort of shop that would, if he puts it again to somebody else or he's just leaving it there, I think the council can have powers soon to take it over.
I think the challenge with this is, of course, as Ramsgate Town Council, we're interested in the problem of empty shops and the impact it has on our town centre. And there is a certain amount of overlap with what comes in on planning as to what we get faced with and what the future is. And I personally, I do certainly accept that the outer ends are increasingly essentialised and it has to happen because we just don't have the retailers to fill those premises.
Can I make one comment? I mean, we walk around Ramsgate Town centres and that Argos store, haven't we got no, nothing for Ramsgate Town Council to do and get in touch with these landlords of Argos? Because that's a bloody tick, it's a nice lot, I mean, we should be getting in touch with saying.
That is something, getting in touch with those empty shop owners has been something that our town centre.
How could you, I'm not knocking anybody, as long as.
It's something that Rebecca has been doing consistently over many years as I've known her. And she has been doing that. What we actually have now is an empty shops working group, which is not just R T C involved, but is something that was very much a part of what Rebecca has been doing, is trying to liaise with the owners of those properties. Councillor Hudson?
This working group, which is led by Louise Brooks.
Yeah.
Her and Rebecca have been looking at lots of these empty shops, houses and who owns. It's not fair, who does actually own them? You know.
Companies.
To start off with, to find out who actually owns the property, so.
I was just going to say councillor Shonk, that's what this document has come out of. It has been an ongut, seriously, it has been.
How many years has that been empty?
I know, I know.
I mean, people walk around Ramsgate, they want the vistas into Ramsgate, but honestly, if they come or whatever.
I can tell you, I can tell you on New Look, the property's been empty for seven years, but the New Look have been paying rent on it for five years. So the owner thinks it's only been empty for two years. So when they finally got a hold of the owner, they said, no, it's only been empty two years, had absolutely no idea that this property was actually physically empty for five years before that. And that's the challenge.
They don't care.
Councillor Orban?
Yeah, just to say, Chair, you can, you can go and find all these owners, you can go and find them, we've got no power whatsoever, no, T D C, Ramsgate Town Council one, T D C one, but Ramsgate Town Council one. But then it's, any council that has that, has that power, that if they do take a property on, it's a bit like compulsory versus. You need, the council don't want it, so what if people don't want to use it? So the council's just stuck with it, something to do with. But, you know, I think we have to be realistic in this thing about the High Street. The only thing that, the only thing is the entrepreneur or the people who think, actually, I can run a business here and take a business on. And but I think the only other way is to take all of the properties off of them and put the rents low to start people up. But then, but then that's a cost to.
And that's not in our remit.
It's a cost to pay.
And it's not in our remit.
And so we can't do anything, yeah.
Councillor Hudson?
The working group is trying to look at meantime use.
So you have like pop up shops or?
People only want, say, a lease for six months and they want to try it out as a new business. So, yes, it sounds a bit desperate, but anything's better than nothing.
They're trying to broker, they're trying to broker the relationship between the potential users and the owners to get these shops back into use.
I make a point that the shops that have started up in Ramsgate are completely not really suited to the market. They don't seem to know what their market is and what their customs. For example, there's a bookshop in Harvester Street. And that one, you know, it lasted what, a year? So, you know, Louise is trying to sort of match shops and, you know, potential leaseholders, owners and what they're actually selling. Because if they haven't got a market, there's no point, as in customer base.
Yeah.
Can I have one more comment?
Yeah.
I walked around the town with Iris Johnson about 20 years ago and we have an empty shops manager from T D C. So it can be done, but obviously it's got to go through T D C.
Different times.
I think unfortunately, I'm not, T D C don't have an empty shops. And, yeah, I mean, as I say, all I can say is that certainly Rebecca has been working consistently over a long period. She's done several reports to town promotion about her work on empty shops. What's really good here is that she's not doing it on her own, and she's able to be a part of this empty shops group. We just need to note the report. And so if that's all right, I'm going to hand that over. The palm relocation.
Cut them up and recycle them.
It's a palm annihilation, it's probably the native.
I'm tired of talking about the palms. So we've had a couple of seasonal times where we were expecting or hoping, perhaps I should say, T D C to dig some holes for us and help us move them. For various reasons, other priorities have come in and that's not happened. And so what I have said to Rebecca this time is, we pay for it. If, at the moment, it is scheduled on open spaces to, for them to dig the holes so that the work can be done. But what I've said is that if that can't be done and it's there, I've asked her to get external quotes for those works to be carried out because if it's not done by March, then it's back into September again. And I don't want to be sitting here in six months' time talking about them again, councillor Nixie.
Oh, not good, Chair.
I mean, honest question, you've got these palms, which are not native and of no use absolutely, like probably in our inbox. Or you've got the money about those palms that we could possibly do something with and get better planting and other things and use it that way. Why are we even considering using that money for those farms? When it's like, if we got the money, we could generally use something in other areas in a different way. It's mental.
We've saved the money already from, it was going to cost us £24,000 a year.
Only if we agreed.
To maintain them.
Yeah, exactly.
So we've saved that, but we now have to do something with them. So either we do ditch them, but this, the full council voted against that and they wanted to save the palms. And the only way to do that now is to plant them out. And so this will be a one-off payment. And then once that's done, our technicians, under their normal workload, will be able to maintain them as part of their work, what we call town enhancement. Councillor Orban?
Yeah, I'll just, with councillor Nixie on this, I just think that they've had their day, they've all did. Most of them are dead, dying, there's a couple left, you know, and we've spent a lot of money planting them somewhere where they probably won't last. So my view is that we should recycle them, recycle the pots and get rid of it, that's just my opinion, my other opinion.
Well, in that case, we need to, as the town promotion committee, make a proposal to go to full council? For that decision?
That, Chair.
Second it?
End of this month?
Yeah, I would propose that, Chair.
And so councillor Shonk, you're not on this. So what you're saying is that we actually ditch the palms altogether?
Altogether.
But we also make the point of, this is what we're going to do with the money, that we would have used for that, so we can use it in a different way, we put it across as, you know.
The money, if we ditch it, the money will go back into the R T C budget with no specific purpose. It'll go back into the general fund.
Well, that's fine.
And it's just.
We can use it.
But that's what will happen to the money. So what that does is that changes a couple of other things. So let's, so proposed by councillor Orban, seconded by councillor Nixie. Those in favour among the committee members? For? Councillor? Against? I'm against, but it carried. So that's carried, so that will be a proposal that will go to full council next month. What that does is it changes some of the other recommendations from tonight, which is about the environments from the, from the budget from this year. Because when we had the Excel spreadsheet up on the screen, we talked about the three underspends, which were the beautification. No, it wasn't all of that, was it? Which of those were going to palms? Because some of them are going somewhere else.
Palm relocations and 8,000.
Zelenius.
Fourth on the bottom.
Miss.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't change, it was going to be requested if you're doing.
Yeah, it's at the council, the council might decide not to.
Well, certainly council decided that they wanted desperately to keep the palms. Last time we voted on it at full council, so, yeah.
Need to make an argument, well, no, sorry, let's just go, let's just go, carry on Chair, sorry.
That's palms finished for now. Operation Dynamo?
Yeah, so.
Was there, what was the recommendation on the end of that one?
What's pumped it, yeah, it was to agree to quote somebody.
So Operation Dynamo is, this is the 25, 26 budget. And it's the return of the Dunkirk ships, which will be our main event. Um, and it's the return of the Dunkirk ships, which will be our main event for twenty twenty five. Um, now, uh, what Rebecca's put is, uh, three recommendations. The full amount of twenty four thousand three eighty to be allocated as her option one. That does include an additional light display. Um, the alternative is the, um, the main event and the main expenses for the proposed event, which is nineteen thousand six hundred and eighty. Um, and then if we approve that, the money that is, the difference between nineteen six eighty and the full amount that is available within the budget would be transferred into the New Year's Eve event budget. Um, so I, I do know that there is some nervousness about allocating the entire budget for the year for one event. Um, and personally, I would be going for option two, but, um.
Do you want me to clarify?
Yeah.
A few bits, so.
Yes.
Um, the budget for next year's council events and new events is twenty six thousand. Town clerk's advised that option one would, like you say, nearly spend all of that budget. There may be events that pop up during the year that we might wanna put on and do, do stuff towards. So she's recommended option two and three.
I would, wouldn't I? I would be awkward. And it, it, for me, we wouldn't be seeing that if it wasn't for Operation Dynamo. Getting a court of influence off Operation Dunkirk. And for those people that are still here and can still do this day, cause there might not be, there might not be another one. So my, my, my view is that we pay the respect that they're due. And for those who never came back in Operation Dynamo, and that we paid for, and that we reserved the full amount.
Well, can we, can we look, can we run up the page and look at what that difference is? So, um, halfway down page three, or third of the way down page three, you've got the main expenses for the proposed event, including two parades. Um, fifteen items on there, um, which is what comes to nineteen six eighty. Um, there are some bits that can be jiggled around that might, um, save some small amounts, but probably not, not a huge amount. Um, the pre-approved budget for twenty five, twenty six is twenty six thousand. Um, so the nineteen thousand would be comfortably within that and leave some, some flex for other things that might come up. Which is the estimated cost for the VED commemorations, about seventeen hundred. So we've got VED, VE Day commemorations as well. Um.
You just got up.
Yeah.
Sorry, the, so.
That's the one where I started, it was, okay. Hang on a minute. Okay, councillor Orban.
Uh, well, all I was gonna say, Chair, is if we get rid of the stupid palms, the money that, the money that will save with that can justify the twenty four grand.
We cannot guarantee that we're gonna get rid of the stupid palms.
No, I know that, it's the same.
We have to, to bear that in mind. Um, there will be some objections, but, um.
Of course there will, there's always objections.
Final vote will be.
No, we don't.
I, I'm gonna come to something else in a minute that might also affect this.
Sorry, the parade costs and workshops, who's doing, who's doing the?
I don't know who she's got planned.
What's your workshop?
Okay. That will be contracted out.
Exactly. Should everyone I think that contracted that and who gets most of RTC's money throughout the year?
I knew.
We just, exactly, but it is important because someone's getting a very good salary from us.
Can you make a note of that and pass it on?
I would.
I, I know what you're saying. I, we'll get that passed on.
Three events a year, basically, is where we go at the moment, you know.
Chair, I'm just, sorry, it just made me laugh, I beg your pardon. But, um, I, I just said it's Winston Churchill's getting free, free.
Yeah, I, I was a bit curious about Winston.
I'm telling you that that is, that that is a lookalike.
Like, yeah, I have no idea, I have no idea.
Not taking him up from anywhere. Um, I, I.
Well, they're hiring him, so they're raising him, aren't they?
It smells a bit.
You know, so, yeah, but I, I just, it's not me funny, no, I just think that's.
Yeah, I, I was.
But that's, this is my.
Unfortunately, with Rebecca being off sick, I haven't been able to ask her about what hiring Winston Churchill quite looks like. So, um, my apologies for that.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing, sorry to interrupt, but one of the things that we mentioned with the technicians rest of it is like training them up to do certain things. So this whole sort of like, um, road closure, where is it? I can't even see it now looking. Um, company without source for the weekend for both parades. I mean, if we bought that in-house, that saves us that money.
Yeah.
And we've talked about this before, about training our workforce up. So why aren't we?
And that really is where, um, under the comments bit, I was saying, so there may be some jiggy pokery around some of the costs there.
Exactly, our staff costs haven't been included and I think that's a, this is a weekend.
It may be brought in-house, subject to staff availability. And I don't know, obviously I can't tell at the moment what staff availability will be.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, if we can bring it in-house and they are able to do it, then I'm sure we will. But we have to cost it as if we may not be able to, because we may not have that staff availability. We don't, we don't have that many staff. Um, and so it just. I think I'd rather leave the cost on there and then save the money later. This, councillor Orban.
Yeah, just to say, Chair, I, I mean, I think some of us got different views, different points, different points, points of view. Um, I prefer it to stay as, you know, with that full amount that we save. But however, it's got to come to council and I think that's the place for people who are not here to make an argument.
The other thing is RTC staff costs, personnel have not been included in the above projected expenses. So there are, there is some uncertainty in there. Um, and also, um, the issue of whether or not to employ an event manager if we keep the road closure in-house. So, you know, they are unknowns.
Do we, do we assume therefore that this is coming to full council?
Yes.
If we recommend.
So what are we doing with it now? Just putting it at the moment?
I think it's, what will be is our recommendation, but can I, can we just go back to, because councillor Orban has raised this? Um, it, can we go back to the, the estimated cost of the, that one, yeah? Um, so, uh, what is being recommended is the remaining funds within the council events budget could be considered for a light display projection at the harbour over Operation Dynamo Weekend. Or it could go towards decluttering the harbour of redundant signage and installing new uniformed signs, ensuring the harbour looks its best for the occasion, increasing the event cost to estimated twenty four three eighty.
Is that your ACC issue?
No.
Uh, signage?
No.
Uh, not on the harbour.
TDC, TDC, down to the harbour master.
Okay.
Yeah, not. Councillor.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Chair, I was just gonna say, it's just down to the harbour master of what, what is there and, and what, and what isn't there. If I may just interject as well and just say, um, that the town clerk and I have had discussions with the harbour group, which are a group of individuals, they're not a real formed kind of group, who want to put, uh, for want of a better word, adverts in relation to the Operation Dynamo, which would be down at the harbour arm. Um, which is pictures of boats and stuff like that and, and, and historical photos. Um, so, you know, which is currently under discussion with TDC. So just, so you're aware of that in, in relation to what things need to be removed, I do not know.
Well, just, just picking up on the little word or there.
Or.
I would be, if, if it's necessary, I would be more inclined to be decluttering the harbour. Um, because that's a long-term, um, advantage than a short-term light display projection.
Especially if you get the obelisk up and then it's by that.
Yeah. So that would be my choice of the two. Um, however, I think that depends, I, I like the town, like, like the town clerk, I'm a little bit wary of committing the whole budget to effectively one event and a little side event, if you like, for VE Day. I don't mean that is a side event, but it's, um, it's a much, much, much smaller event. Um, unless we've got the money from somewhere else, which would mean wiring this year's palms money into the, um, Operation Dynamo budget for next year. So it needs to come from this year to next year. Um, so do I have any, any other comments first?
No, obviously what I've got to say, Chair, thank you.
So councillor Orban, which would you prefer?
Would you prefer a light display or declutter the harbour?
Um, I, I, I just think that, to be quite honest, a, a light display is, is not worth it. Um, we're currently putting up all the lights around the arches. We've got the, we've got money that's coming in, that's signed for the obelisk. And I think that would be enough. And so I would go along with the decluttering, providing that's obviously worked along, we can't just go along and take everything off with the harbour master. Um, and, um, yeah, I'll go with that.
Okay, do you have a, a second after that? Councillor Nixon, everyone agree? Anyone who agrees? Yeah, okay. So the proposal is the, the, the Operation Dynamo event as described by Rebecca, plus the decluttering of the harbour in conjunction, obviously. We, um, is that subject to the nine, to the ten thousand pound we're saving on the palms if we shred them?
No. That's a different matter if we get that in the budget to give ourselves an extra, that's.
Okay, that, that will, okay. Right. Um.
Excuse me.
So the, the last part of that is, um, there's nothing left. It's effectively agreed, so two and three are redundant. Okay, thank you. Um. Decorative lights in York Street and Queen Street.
Yep.
Okay. So all those bits and pieces of leftover money, those three items, those three key, three key areas, the, the, um, summer lights, the beautification budget and the other one. Um, was, Rebecca has come up with a proposal about, um, some additional, a con, an expansion or, or extension of the lighting that we have around the town centre to expand up into Queen Street and down York Street. Um, so it will be the same as we've already got, but it will be extending it. For that, we need to wire the money forward out of this year's budget into next year's budget for that to be a project to be undertaken. Any questions or comments? Sorry, Dean.
Just to add a bit of context, so, um, town clerk stated that where there's failing bulbs in York Street and Queen Street, technicians will be removing them anyway. Um, so she recommended, although she, she said that there was a report of council earlier saying that the lights shouldn't be put up, it will look like it just prematurely finishes. So she's, she states that it probably, if they're already up and being removed, the new ones probably could go up and replace them. But it's just a suggestion.
Chair, I, I have to say, you know, Christmas, the lights were fab, really, really enjoyed that. My wife, who doesn't come here, that often came when we walked in, and, and she absolutely loved them. She was so surprised with it, she absolutely loved them. So I have no problem with it being extended into York Street. Queen Street, I certainly, obviously a little bit, but.
It'll go up to York, it'll go up from where it is now to the end of York Street, then down York Street. I don't think it goes beyond that junction.
I just think that, yeah, that would, that would be great.
Yeah. I, I've been surprised that those big bulbs have, have been a lot more attractive than I was expecting. I was a bit questionable about that, but I.
No, I think they're great.
I'm pleased with that. Um, so everyone else, anyone else agree with, um, or any other questions?
No.
No.
Right.
So the recommendation is, um, right, so this will be a environment and it will be from those three budgets that had the, the largest amount of, um, money left over. Um, it, this is a project that came up after we did the budget setting, which was now like four, five months ago. So that's why it wasn't contained within the original, um, town promotion budget that we set. This was something that came up after that, so, um. Uh, I do, yeah, I do need a propos, proposal for it. Councillor Orban, second.
I'll just say, can I just add, Chair, I think it's, it's, you know, we are, we are looking at the public realm of Ramsgate and I think that that.
Yeah.
That will enhance it.
Yeah.
And I, and I think, I think it's, I think it's.
It's up past Markers where they're turning to Markers.
Um, second, councillor Hudson, no question?
I'd just make a comment, maybe King Street next time.
Yes, the catenary in King Street is the one that's coming down in March. So we've got, so the catenary that's, um, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the, the catenary that goes from, um, a little, I, I think it's West One roughly, further up King Street, is that the stuff that is actually in very poor condition and needs to be removed. So that, that's the route that it's going down. And I think you're right, that needs future, future one. But at the moment, it's not suitable for, um, the other problem with, with a lot of that area, cause it goes up, I think it goes up to the end of pedestrianised. The reason, um, that we have a challenge with that is that, um, in order to do any maintenance work, is that the road, we have to pay for road closures and that is an issue in King Street. And I think it's not quite as bad in Queen Street and New York Street, but that, that's one of the problems there. But yes, we'll ask Rebecca to consider that later. Do I have a, a proposal for the recommendation? Councillor Orban's, led by councillor Nixon, everyone agreed? Agreed. Okay, you take that one away? Decorative lighting electricity supply.
Okay, so this is for the town centre lights, so the existing fee pillar, um, is not suitable for what, what we're using. So it will need to be replaced with a hundred amp required for the new lights. Um, and this is just basically, uh, a recommendation for the four thousand pound, um, to supply and refit a new fee. Um, with, uh, further information from KCC regarding an statement fee and, uh, from the energy council as well.
And it is.
I propose a proposal, Chair.
Well, can, can we just clarify, it's, um, the recommendation includes approving the environment of funds from identified unspent TP budget and proceed with arranging for the installation. Uh, so that, so the recommendation includes a environment.
Thank you.
Yeah, seconded by councillor Nixon, everyone agreed?
Agreed.
Excellent, thank you. Um, Simon.
Over yours.
On my knees.
I'm on this.
Chair.
Yeah, thank you.
Over to you.
Over to me. Um, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, two updates. I won't go into detail with the first one, cause a lot of that's covered in the working group and the majority of councillors here were present. Um, but.
So Nixon's the only one who wasn't.
If anyone wants me to go into anything in particular, I would note, um, a lot of it's an update from last time anyway, on the progress. Um, and a lot of it's about starting to look ahead to next season and progressing a lot of the groundwork we've laid in the last year. Um, two, two things to note on, on, on sort of positive progress in particular, slightly new. Um, TDC are internally looking at the issue of licensing, which is a, a good thing from our perspective. Uh, that's pushing that forward and that'll really help us. Um, I'm keeping an eye on that and keeping a loop on that. The other thing is we've also talked to, um, Ramsgate Football Club about community outreach programme and trying to get disadvantaged kids in Ramsgate down to the beach for a day of activities in the summer. Um, and a very positive response so far, um, but early discussions. Um, that's the general update. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I just, Chair, if I might, I, I must say that, I mean, seeing the Ramsgate Football Club, for getting the kids down to the beach and doing different stuff like that, I think it's great, cause a lot of those kids will be, be a new intern. Um, you know, this, well, mainly not getting the, the appetite that they possibly put out down and around doing, doing other stuff. So anything like that, I just think that's brilliant and well done, so I, I just think that's brilliant.
I would caution you, it is early days, but it is, but it is positive. And, and what's been good about it is, this has been something we've been talking about in the working group for a while, about how to access least advantaged kids in a way that would work without to Ramsgate and without jumping too far ahead. It, it seems like a good thing.
We, we had a thing, uh, uh, before Simon, um, was appointed. Um, it was agreed, um, that there will be a seventy thirty split between, by active Ramsgate, reached out to, um, tourists and visitors and, uh, provision for work with local people. And it's not always easy to measure exactly how that is, because we advertise to local people as well as to, to holidaymakers. And it's not always easy to measure exactly how that is, because we advertise to local people as well as to, to holidaymakers as well. But one, to increase the amount of work we did with schools and, and children, and, and although this is not a school, we felt that the Ramsgate Football Club, um, was a very good option as it actually had a wider reach than individual schools. So that's very much a part of that seventy thirty split, um, with some of the funding of, of Active Ramsgate, so, yeah.
Can I just mention, just a comment, they do have children from the five day of the London brought into Ramsgate Football Club as well.
Do they?
Yeah.
Well, cool.
I think, I, well, I think they do and I think they, they actually have quite a big programme that's not just this summer one, they have things through the year, they also have five different sites, they run different ones. Talking to the chairman, what we're going to try and do is pilot the one they hold at the stadium, which is largely local kids, uh, because it is banned in Ramsgate.
Yes, that's what we want.
We'll bear that, we'll bear that in mind, councillor Shon, that it, we, obviously we need to focus primarily on local children, so.
It's probably because that means it's open to everybody.
Yeah. I mean, if there are external kids in there, but as long as it's primarily, um, local children, I think we're, we're probably okay on that. Um, but yeah, we'll just bear that in mind, thank you. Um, what's there? Right, so you've got the, um, ramp, request for spending approval, which is item seven, two on your planes. Um, so it's approving the, the final expenditure of the twenty four, twenty five accounts, basically. Um, you'll notice that there was a, a noticeable underspend on the accounts earlier for, um, Active Ramsgate. This is what it's been saved for, so this is the final bit. But because it's over a thousand pounds, um, we just needed to make sure that everyone was okay with that, so we're tasking it up on screen. Um, the rest of the report does outline the, the detail of it, but that's the actual recommendations.
Yeah, just, just to add to that, um, yeah, some of this follows on from what's have sort of groundwork laid as well, so the refreshing of the website and having the new themes in place, uh, so we've always held this to this quarter. Um, um, A, to have those things in place and then B, because this is a good time to ramp the promotion ahead of warmer months and winter.
Okay, so, um, proposal and second of councillor Alburn, councillor Huxley, all agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you, that's carried. Um, and finally, to receive and note the minutes of the working group, um, meetings. So that's the two Active Ramsgate working group meetings that have been held, tenth of December and the fourth of February.
Do they always have to be in the middle of the day?
Uh, yes, they have had to be during the middle of the day because, um, it's really about staff time coming along. However, at the very, however, big however, at the very end of the minutes for the fourth of February, which you will have only received this afternoon, so, because we only held it yesterday. I have raised the possibility that actually we don't need the Active Ramsgate working group anymore. Um, it was very much a product.
Sales millions.
Sorry? It was very much a product, product and need under, um, when we were using independent consultants for the Active Ramsgate management. We've had Simon in post for coming, it must be two years now. Um, so Active Ramsgate is being run in-house and I have felt increasingly over the last year that it's not necessary to hold that working group. Simon is supervised by Rebecca, Rebecca is supervised by the town clerk, we're all in liaison on a regular basis, so.
I mean, not to worry about.
I kind of threw it out at the end of the meeting yesterday that it was a bit of a surprise, no one was expecting it, and I said, shall we cancel these? So we're going to hold one more and then that will be it. Um, subject, actually, to this group meeting, um, actually being happy that we do cancel the Active Ramsgate working group. Yeah, okay, so.
And I'm, I'm happy to come to this on, on, like.
Well, exactly.
On a constant basis anyway, to answer questions.
Yeah. This is, this is, this is that forum for presenting his report, rather than duplicating it, um, at, at the working group. So it, it, that kind of like answers your question, um, and, yeah.
Perfect.
Um, so, uh. The other thing, the other thing.
Number of minutes, Chair.
Sorry?
No minutes.
Yeah, can we note the minutes?
Yeah, there it is.
Yep.
Right, the other thing on the back of that is I have spoken to Laura, um, about the, uh, frequency of the town promotion committee. It used to be held every two months and then somehow or other, I'm not quite sure how, it got reduced to every three months. I personally don't feel that that works very well. I would like it to go back to every two months, because I feel that the three months you have a disconnect. Um, and so I, I have spoken to Laura with the suggestion that we increase it to every three months, uh, every two months. Does anyone else have any comments or thoughts about that?
Chair, Chair, the, the only, the only thing I would say about is to, if you go out every two months, you can always, you know, if you've got no business.
Hmm.
You can cancel, can't you?
As you've seen from the agenda today, the chances of having no business are very, very soon, and we have a busy year coming up.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, that gives you, that gives you the option.
And it, it's easier than calling, calling an extraordinary meeting.
I'd rather have it every two months, than three months and then you have to have, I mean, you have to have an emergency one for whatever.
I've just felt over the last year or so that holding it every three months, I've done a lot of work with Rebecca in between and with Dean, um, but I just feel that we don't have the connection with what's going on by only meeting four times a year. And to me, it's not felt enough as a committee, um, and so that's why I'm suggesting, um. It's still, Dean is still saving some work because he is losing four working groups a year and gaining two town promotions, so. He is, because he was delighted at losing, um, four meetings a year, but I'm, I'm sorry, we've gained two, two town promotions. Um, so he, so the office does still save some work.
And we're finding something else for him, though, Chair.
Oh, absolutely, we can, we can fill the time, he's going to have to meet with, going to have to meet with me more often to talk about budgets every quarter, so, um. The other thing is that, um, one of the things that we found doing that the budget, um, coming up for Christmas was that it took a long time and so Dean and I are going to work together over the next few weeks to come up with a programme where we do a quarterly budget update. Um, so whether or not that all, how that will come out to committee or not, we don't know yet. We're still in the process of working out how we do that. Um, but that's something that we both felt would be beneficial, um, for coming to this question about what do we do with the viraments at this time, yeah? So apart from that, does anyone have any other questions, anything else I want to ask? Because in that case, the meeting is now closed and the next meeting is on Wednesday, the ninth of April at seven o'clock. Which is three months, but then after that will hopefully.